All right, let's get going. We've called a order and priced for the pledge of allegiance. Do you pledge allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, we have everyone here tonight except for Mr. Lappick. Executive sessions, I wanted to announce that we will have an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. Do we have any public comment? I don't have any forms, but anybody wish to make public comment at this time? Okay, we'll move into the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I'd like to start off with personnel items. We have some professional staff resignations. 4.1, we ask you to approve the professional.
Move to combine all personnel.
A motion and a second to combine all personnel. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to general fund budget for 2017-18. The district administration would like to recommend the approval of the general fund budget for the 17-18 school year in the amount of $66,078,612. This is a .39 increase in property tax.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments on this?
I just have a comment. Dave, if I could put you on the spot for just a minute, can you go through for the public where we started out, our deficit, and how we ended up here?
Certainly. In late January, I presented the initial budget. I presented the initial budget to the board. At that point in time, we were looking at a $1.01 million budget deficit, plus the planned use of our Peasars Reserve. Since that point in time, we've, excuse me, back it up, that equated to a 3.1% tax increase. Since that point in time, through refining budgetary expenditures, having retirements, achieving some savings in healthcare, and a number of other aspects, we were able to drive that budget deficit down to just over $150,000, which is the .39% tax increase that we're proposing tonight.
Well, I just have to say, the school district I'm really proud of, and they've really, really worked hard for this, and thank you, everybody.
Dave, I have a question for you as well. Is there any further insight into what's happening from our friends in Harrisburg?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it's been very quiet at the state level. Last week, they sent home most of the rank-and-file legislature and just the executives stuck around to negotiate things. They've been talking about various revenue streams to try and fill the budget hole that the state has, but at this point in time, there has been no, no further decisions. Specifically with regard to the subsidy increases that we're expecting in our budget, other than rumors, at this point in time, there's been no action, no indication whether it's going to be funded or not going to be funded.
So the worst-case scenario here is that we pass this tax increase to cover our $150,000 deficit, but then fall $200,000 more dollars short, or some portion of that $200,000 if the state doesn't come through at a later date, right?
Yes, just for clarification purposes, we have three components of changes in funding from the state in our budget. One is, yeah, must turn me off. One is a $125,000 increase in basic ed subsidy, which was what was proposed by the governor. A second item is a $75,000 roughly increase in the special ed subsidy, which was also suggested by the governor. And the third component is a reduction in the transportation subsidy. That has had absolutely no clarity to it at all, and the number that we're using is a reduction of $90,000. That is based on everybody in the state getting an 8.6% reduction in their, in their transportation subsidy. It was a $50 million proposed decrease, but they didn't explain how it was going to be achieved. So, so if none of those things happen, our exposure is $109,000, okay? $110,000. But if the transportation happens and the basic ed and special ed subsidies don't happen, that's where we stand to lose $200,000.
But then another scenario, to me now, then another scenario that's, that's possible is that they don't do the cut in the transportation subsidy, but do provide the extra funds via the general education fund, correct? And in that scenario, we're plus 90K, no?
If that were to happen, you're correct. I haven't heard any real conversation in that direction. I know there are certain senators, we had Senator Mench here a month or so ago, he was supportive of trying to restore that money, as are some others, but I haven't heard of any, anybody gaining any traction in that aspect. But yes, if, if that gets, if that cut gets eliminated, then we would be 90,000 to the pause.
Well, this is probably going to be the hardest vote that I may, have made as it relates to the budget since I joined the board. The other ones were easy because they were either 0% or I voted no. And, but in this case, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to back the administration's very diligent efforts to reduce a 3.1% tax increase or a $1.2 million deficit down to the current .39% tax increase, which is still more than I want, but is quite small, relatively speaking. So I will be voting yes for the first time for a tax increase, and I urge everyone else to do the same.
At this point, based on the conversations I've had, based on the conversations I haven't had from the community, or lack of public comment regarding concern over the tax increase, it's my intent to also, and I, as Mr. Rabinewitz said, very difficult decision, but it's my intent to vote yes. I do request, however, that anybody intending to vote no to consider sharing your opinions and your reasons why, and opening up for discussion just for the sake of the rest of us, in case for myself, if I'm missing anything. Because this is a difficult decision, I want to make sure I'm understanding the full picture. Because I believe we are already overtaxed. I do not go with the argument that we started at a 3.1% tax increase and we've cut it down. We could start with a 10% tax increase, you know, they're going, we're going to put in what we want to put in, the sky's the limit until we start cutting back. So I'm not as impressed with that, although I am impressed with the administration's handling of this budget process. But again, if anybody would share any opinions against why I should vote no, I would appreciate that.
Dave, could you maybe elaborate a little bit on the bus situation and why we want to replace the two 2005 buses versus fixing the engines and making them part of the spare deploy unit?
Later on in the, in the board agenda is a recommendation to award bids for, for school buses. Typically, we, we budget $250,000 annually for replacement of our transportation vehicles. This year, we added a fourth vehicle, there's three buses that we're proposing replacing, and a fourth vehicle, which is a wheelchair van, which we're replacing, a unit that was totaled in 2015. At that point in time, the board supported replacing it, but we were in the midst of a budget impasse with the state and did not know whether we were getting funding in that 15-16 tax year until late April. So we did not purchase it that year. We spoke about it again in the fall and got authorization to move forward to bid that again this year. So the plan for that was always to use the insurance proceeds and any available money in the budget to support the purchase, and anything else would be funded through fund balance. So that's that one, let's put that aside. Other than that, traditionally, we look to replace, like I said, $250,000. That may be, that may be three buses, or it may be a combination of buses and vans. This year, we, had everything gone as intended, we would be here requesting the replacement of three 2002, 72-passenger school buses, okay? Unfortunately, during the year, we have, we incurred problems with two of our 2005 vehicles. One hasn't been roadworthy, hasn't been able to be driven for quite some time, and I just in talking to CMD this afternoon, found that the second one actually had a catastrophic failure in the last two days of school. So that's not roadworthy either. And I'll talk about that in a second because our, our trade-in on that vehicle is going to most likely drop. I can't hold somebody to a, to a usable trade-in value when they have to tow it to their, to their shop. So, so we would have been planning to replace three vehicles anyway, but we had two catastrophic failures of newer vehicles. And in speaking with CMD, they can, they can keep the 2002s in this, in the fleet as spares for one more year, rather than trying to spending $15,000 to $20,000 to replace engines on two 2015s to get another couple of years out of them. And I think that's probably a better use of our funds, rather than investing $20,000 in a 12-year-old vehicle and seeing how long it, it goes on from there. Now, as we are looking at the replacement cycle, we're going to keep the 2000, if we keep the 2002s for one more year, that'll put their replacement cycle at 16 years. Next year, we have some 2003s that we would be retaining for one additional year, and then as, as luck would have it, or as timing would have it, we don't have any 2004 vehicles. We bought 2005s in the fall of 2004, and we bought some more 2005s in the summer of 2005. So we don't have any 2004 vintage vehicles, so if we can make it through the next two years without any failures of these old vehicles, we'll be back on a 15-year replacement cycle. So certainly, we can choose to repair these vehicles, but they are 12-year-old vehicles that have been driven daily for 12 years. So there's going to be, likely be other maintenance issues that we incur going along the way as well.
And if you could repeat about how much was the trade-in for the three vehicles? Right now, obviously, one's out, so take that one out.
The 2002 had a $3100 trade-in value. The two, the two 2005s, if they were running, were valued at $3700. We knew the one wasn't, that was decreased to $1,000, and I'm assuming that the second one that's not running will be reduced to the same amount.
So, and maybe this is an easy answer, I'm not exactly sure as into, buses cost roughly $80,000. After about 12 years' worth of use, they're down to about $3,000 in value. So they depreciated $70-some thousand, $77,000 roughly. Why wouldn't we buy, if available, why wouldn't we buy maybe a year or two-year-old vehicles versus spending $80,000? If they depreciate that much, that quickly, why wouldn't we maybe got, get the 2015 buses at like $40,000 or $50,000?
I can't speak to whether that's an accurate value for 15. What I can tell you is our fleet is much older than pretty much anybody else you'll go to, and we have people from CMD here that can, can talk to you about that. If you go to a contracted service, they replace vehicles in four to five years, okay? We keep ours for 15. And we keep them for 15 because we have somebody maintaining, diligently maintaining our vehicles, they're sheltered throughout the year, and there's eyes on them at all times. We can get an extra 10 years out of them that some other organizations can't. So putting that initial investment into a new vehicle, we know the maintenance record from day one. We don't know how much abuse it's taken from, used vehicle's taken from another, another contractor.
So, your answer somewhat intrigues me, though. So do we know what depreciation is on a one-year-old?
I, I have not ever priced a, a used vehicle, and I don't know if one-year-old vehicles are actually readily available. We don't necessarily buy a 2017 model if a 2016 is available. You know, we'll, we'll weigh the value. If it's a cheaper vehicle, we'll get, we'll get it, but we typically buy new.
Right, but that's still new. That's not, you know, you might get a slightly better price because they want to unload their older inventory, but I'm.
We can make worries on that, but we've never, we've never done that.
I don't know that, that, that this pertains to, to the budget discussion that we're having at this, at the 11th hour as it relates to it, but I sure would be interested in looking at that as an option for, for next year's cycle. I get what you're saying about, you know, I mean, that everybody who buys a used car always has the risk of, of picking up somebody else's problems. And, you know, dealers do, do checks to do their best to ensure that that doesn't happen, and they're the carfax, and all those things that help people go, do that. But, you know, if the depreciation is significant in that first year, even if it's like $10,000, if it's, over the, over the 15-year cycle, how many buses do we have?
We have about 36 buses, and then we have 18 vans or something like that, yeah.
Well, that's not chump change, and so I just think that it would be a worthwhile thing for us to at least consider as, as a possibility, particularly when we know we're going to have a deficit again next year.
I'd be happy to do some research on that.
Bill, you asked, in regards to who was going to vote possibly no, and obviously the reasons. I think it was pretty obvious from last board, I think you left right before I spoke about it, that I was going to vote no, in the simple fact of that I believe there are other options for us that were on the table, such as fixing a 2015 bus, deferring a possible bus, or using fund balance for that last $153,000. Now, I understand that it's not generally supported, and I don't know, you know, how everybody's going to vote, but I don't believe, and when we left last time, it was like a six to two vote as into whom was actually even supportive about it. But I figured I'd bring, I'd give you some numbers on that. So I did a little research as into regarding our fund balance versus how other schools in the neighborhoods have been using their fund balance, which is obviously something, Mr. Nestor has done a fantastic job when it comes to our fund balance and our budget as a whole, and I commend you for the job you've done this year. I also commend Dr. Scherk and all of our department heads that happened to be here. You guys put out a valiant effort in getting us possibly, even the fact that we're only talking about $153,000 and possibly like $18 per every $120,000. But I did want to bring out a couple of things here. So when I was looking at our neighborhood school districts, I found that Springfield was, will be approving a use of approximately $5 million of their $19 million fund balance, or 26% of their fund balance. Springfield has a $171 million budget next year and only have $19 million in fund balance total. Boyer Town is going to be using approximately $1.4 million of their $12 million fund balance, which is 12%. Boyer Town has $123 million budget. OJ Roberts is going to be using $1.5 million of their $8.5 million fund balance for 18, that's just 18%, OJ Roberts, $110 million budget. And Pottstown will be using approximately $1.2 million of their $4 million fund balance, which is 30% of their fund balance. Pottstown has $62 million budget. We actually are only scheduled to use $750,000 of our $13.4 million budget. We not only have the largest fund balance in all of the neighborhood school districts by a lot when it comes to percentage of finance of the actual expenses, we also spend the least amount on a yearly basis. So that's why I had brought to the table as into, it's $150,000, $3,000, we're not talking about using 3 million, 4 million, 5 million in the case of Springfield, right? That's why I was looking at only possibly using such a small amount since we were so close. I know, and I think everybody in this room knows, costs to continue to increase, we're going to have to raise taxes. It's just, we're going to have to do that in the future. We're going to have a lot of things that are going to be coming up, and we're going to need to raise taxes for that, right? I just would prefer, and of course, this is me and from the people I've spoken to in the community, as in, we would rather it be when it's needed 100%, and if we have to go up to a .75 or a 1, you know, something like the number that's necessary and we have to go to that, I'd rather it then, than .3 this week. Next year, .6, then figure after that, 1.2. Continuously raising just puts us back in the same hole that I think we were, although at a lower number. We're not two, we're not talking 2%, 3%, like we were talking back in the day, we're still trying to do everything we can. I would just prefer, if it's possible at this present time, to use that funds for, which is the reason why I was voting no.
Thank you for those numbers, and I would, I'm going to ask Dave if he doesn't mind to respond directly to the comparisons that you gave to the other districts, because they are kind of startling. But I just want to throw in there, I don't necessarily agree that it's a given that we're going to have to raise taxes. When you, when your, your desires are higher than what the income is, you have two choices. Increase the income, if you have that authority, which by law we do at this time, or decrease your expenses. So I'm, I just want to be clear, I'm not in the mindset that it's automatic that we're going to, in the future, have to increase taxes. To me, that should always be that, the very last option. But Dave, can you?
He does that. Before he does that, I'd like to actually respond, because, because I am familiar with the numbers that, that Mr. Leach just conveyed, and, and, you know, I don't want to disparage other school districts and school boards for their, for their choices, but the reality is, if we went down the same road, our $13 million fund, total fund balance, which, keep in mind, includes our capital fund and our Peasars fund, in addition to our general fund, and each has a different purpose, if we went down that road, we would be bankrupt in a very short period of time. So I can't speak for, for the economic decisions of Springfield where they're using nearly $6 million in fund balance, but, but it would take us two years to, to be out of money if we were to do the same thing. They have a much larger budget than we do, and they have a much larger business base than we do, a much larger tax base. It's hard to compare yourself to them, but personally, hearing that all our neighboring school districts are getting to zero by rating fund balance doesn't change my mind even a little bit. The fact is that, that we have a large amount of expenditures ahead of us in capital reserves, just as an example. We're replacing a roof next year in one of our schools, we have another roof that is near its, its end of life. We have the potential to, to have to deal with increased students from housing developments, and how we're going to handle that. We have, we're resurfacing roads, we're doing all these things. I don't remember what the number is for the, for the five-year and 10-year plan for capital reserve, but we don't have enough money now for everything that needs doing. So while it sounds like a lot of money, Mr. Leach, to me, it really isn't. On top of that, we have a teacher contract that ultimately will need to be renewed, and each year of the current contract, we're having increases. We have Peasars increases every year, and they passed pension reform, but it's not going to save us even a dime in the next few years. So I just don't see how rating fund balance is going to help our problem. And more specifically, if a small increase prevents us from having to do a much larger one later, then, then I would see that as preferable to doing zero now and then having to raise back to the index in the following year or, or the following years, which is something thankfully we've gotten away from doing. So, did I miss anything on their, their fund balance? Maybe it's time to also remind you that when you use $4 million in fund balance, that you start with a $4 million deficit in the following year. So whatever your problems are, you, you're just compounding them. So you think I didn't listen to you all those times you said it?
Mr. Leach, I'm not familiar with the numbers that you quoted, so I'd like to look at them. I can't speak to what other, whether other people have. I will tell you that we're, we're certainly not the highest fund balance in the region. You can pick and choose some people around that we have more fund balance than, but I can pick some that have 10 times what we have, or more. What, and I don't like to necessarily compare myself to others, but what I can tell you is, we've built a very sound financial platform for Potts Grove School District here. We've been able to weather the mortgage crisis in 2008 and all the fallout from that. We've been able to have very low tax increases for a number of years, and contrary to everybody who says we shouldn't have a tax. And contrary to everybody who says we shouldn't have a tax increase, my belief is, small incremental tax increases are much better than zeros and a spike. In my first year here, we adopted a 9.9% tax increase, because we had had three years of zeros before that. Nobody remembers the zeros when you get a 10, okay? We can't do that anymore, and that's, that's probably a good thing. But the fact remains, if you don't maintain slow, steady revenue growth, and you have a plateau that you get to, where you don't have a choice, you're going to, you're going to be faced with raising taxes more than you want to, or cutting programs that you don't want to cut. So my belief is slow and steady, and I think we've done a good job. In fact, I did some research a couple weeks ago, and over the last seven years, our average increase has been 1.39%, which is far below the Act One index in the last seven years. There have been a year or two that we were slightly above the index, but as a whole, I think we've done a really good job controlling the, the tax growth for the last seven years.
And just to clarify with Mr. Rubenowitz, and of course, what you said, I didn't try to choose and handpick the districts I used. I actually picked just the districts that were immediately here. I didn't try to say, oh, let's go to Lower Murray, and or let's go to others that you would see mostly when someone's trying to compare the districts, oh, well, we want, we're real high because we picked and chose these, or we're really low because we picked and chose those, just there. And clarifica, okay.
Did mean it.
Yeah. And clarification to Mr. Rubenowitz, I actually would never approve to raid the fund balance, as you're so saying, when it comes to Springfield. The reason why I suggested it was because it was only 153,000 versus raiding the 1 point, you know, the 13.4 million. That's the only reason why I actually brought it up. And if I'm not mistaken, we also discussed even possibly going into a deficit, which, of course, I wouldn't agree with as well, so, I mean, it's just, I just wanted to clarify those two.
I think I need to clarify that when I use the word raid, I was speaking generally about all of the school districts that you mentioned, and not specifically referencing any school district, specifically not the Springfield School District. Again, they're a much larger district than we are, and, and so, I don't know enough about their finances to know, to microanalyze the, the decisions that they made. I just know that, that in a case where a school district uses fund balance to cover deficits, even if it's $150,000, then the result is that our deficit is increased by that much in the subsequent year. And we already know that we're starting at 1.6 next year, so that just makes it 1.8 almost, or 1.75 instead of 1.6. So I don't look at the 150 in isolation from the subsequent years that we have to deal with it. And I understand where you're coming from, and when I first joined the board, I would have been all over what you're suggesting, but after three years, you know, and, and a lot of discussions about the budget, I've come to believe that, that we should do everything we can to avoid using fund balance, and, in order to cover deficits, because it's basically just deferring your problems for a subsequent year. So that's, I, I know where you're coming from, I'm empathetic to it. I even waffled on it, because I'm so loath to vote for a tax increase, but I don't see any other option here, for, at least for me. Everybody has to do what they think is right. So, there you go.
And I'll just also add, Rick, you mentioned some of my concerns, and so did you, Dave. I mean, we have a $200,000 question mark with the state right now. We also have, right, there's 13, 13-plus million in our fund balance, but a lot of that's earmarked. We have a five-year capital plan, we have a 10-year capital plan. I know we're borrowed out pretty much for a while with the, with the high school project, and the amount that we borrowed to fund that. So, you know, my, my concern is, if we set the precedent to borrow from our, our fund balance just to, in order to get the tax increase down to zero, or eliminate the tax increase, we're setting up ourselves for a bigger hole. We have also, right, potential for new students. Some of that's already happening, some of, some of those developments are still up in the air, but we have a lot of potential additional costs coming. And even though I, I want just as bad as everyone else does to, to get us to the best possible place, which is zero, it's, I just, I agree, it's not realistic, year on, year on, year, to be able to get there, unless we are planning on emptying out the savings, because our costs will continue to go up. So I think there's, there's a lot of concerns to take into consideration, and that's why I, I can't support the, the borrowing from fund balance idea this time around.
I could just mention too, the one thing that worries me is the possibility of the property tax elimination bill being passed. And if that does pass, we really need to make sure that we have covered our butts, so to say, because it looks like there is a possibility this time. I mean, they keep on pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, and if it passes, the schools are going to be in some serious trouble. And, and I would rather be safe than sorry, personally. So if we can just sort of hold on to our fund balance for now, and just cross our fingers that that doesn't pass, and we can continue on as we have normally, because if that passes, we could, it could throw a huge monkey wrench into quite a few things, including teacher raises, all kinds of stuff. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
Any other?
For the sake of time, I don't want to, but just a couple of quick comments. I want to state that I agree, Mr. Nestor, small increases is better than 000 and then a huge increase. I, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. But I think we need to do, continually keep in mind what our community is, is going through. I have people coming in constantly, realtors coming in, talking about, you know, people losing their homes, you know, those on fixed incomes and so forth. Second comment I want to make, like I said, I will continue to vote yes, I agree with the comments made about the fund balance, on a personal level and a business, you know, in the business sense. But I do believe that it should always be our goal that we seek a 0% tax increase. I'm not comfortable, but I'm one of nine, that, that is not our goal. I believe it should be the goal, not, you know, black and white, you know, if we don't make it, what are we going to do? But it should always be the goal, because the funds are limited. We can increase taxes, but that doesn't mean people's income is increasing. So that's the only comment I'd like to make, I'd like us to consider that for the following budget year.
And I did want to make one last comment, of course, was simply because, I understand, and I knew the fund balance wasn't an option, we, 6-3, we knew it, right? But I also did point out that we could fix the buses, and that would also have gotten us down if we wanted to, but I understand that also is not an option.
So, at this point, can we, can we have a vote on the budget? Or does anybody else have any more comments? Okay, so for 5.1, the 17, 18 general fund budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 7-1.
I would just, before we move on to 5-2, I just want to thank the board, and for, you know, being with us all, along the, the whole, the whole step of the way of this process. We changed some things this year, and we worked through our facilities and operations to have workshops. And one of the things I think that we can say, that I'd like to say, that's, that's, part of the organization, I've always been part of, is a team effort. And we can sit here tonight and say that we got the lowest possible tax increase, and we were, we were, we took into account our tax, our tax, our senior citizens, our overall tax rate, we took into account our programs and our staffing in our elementary, we took into account our programs and staffing in middle school, we took into account our programs and staffing at the high school, and none of that was affected. So I hope I can say that next year, and I might not be able to. I, I'm a realist and understand that I might not be able to. So our conversations next year might be totally different. So while I'm proud to sit here with you all tonight, because I think we did an excellent job in the last six months, getting to a point where we took into account all of our constituents, not just one particular group or the other. But I'm also experienced enough to know, and been in it long enough to know, that, that will, will count this tonight as something that we can build on, but when this process starts again in the fall, we, we want to take a look at it earlier rather than later. That's why we, we wanted to give you the projections for next year, so you could think about what's ahead of us. You know, it could be a totally different story. So, and I've been through that other side of that story, you know, as a building administrator, and it's not, it's not always pretty. So I want to, I want to say thank you, I want to congratulate us for a good job, I want to, Dave and his efforts. I mean, when you think about the, the process that we have, the capital reserve that we have to take care of projects we need to take care of, the Peasars and our overall savings account, we are financially sound. And he put us in that spot, and his team put us in that spot, and our directors are conscious of keeping in that spot. So I'm very proud of the people that, that have worked for us and worked for you, and I think that, you know, we'll, we'll be thankful for today, we'll move on, and then we'll start ramping it up, believe it or not, sooner than later, in how to, how to get through, through the next round, because we can't lose sight, we cannot not look ahead, and that's, that's what we're going to do. So I just wanted to chime in, I didn't want to take a whole bunch of time, but I think it was important that I really just say those things to you as, as, as community members, obviously as board members, and also the staff that's here tonight. So, thank you. Moving on to 5-2.
I'd like to make a motion to combine the rest of the business.
If, if, could we take out 5-3? I have questions about that.
Yeah, it's, for me, I, I think, keep them separate unless, I mean, if I'm not in the majority here, that's fine, but some of the, we have two that need to be talked about, so let's just run through them.
Okay, 5, 5-2, our recommendation is to adopt a 17, 18 real estate levy.
Motion in a second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
5.3, the homestead and farmstead exclusions. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution establishing the homestead and farmstead exclusion for 16, 17, 18 as presented.
So moved? Motion in a second. Any questions?
Reading through it, it was, to me, a little hard to understand. What are these exclusions? And who, like, is this something normal? Is this done every year? Is it not? Personally, I am a beneficiary of, of a homestead exclusion, so I just want to know if I'm still getting it or not.
This is better to answer than I. Right, but not only have we done it every year, but I don't know of any school district, and I'm not saying there isn't one, I don't know of any that don't. Since they put the exclusion in for homeowners years ago, and I'll let Dave speak to it, Potts Grove and every district I'm aware of has followed suit, to answer your question.
Okay. As part of Act One of 2006, there, there was the introduction of gaming in Pennsylvania, and proceeds, or some of the proceeds from the gaming, was designated for property tax relief. And that's what this, this money represents, is that, is that allocation. Annually, homeowners, homeowners, resident homeowners can apply to the county for a homestead exemption.
Right.
Annually, in the first week in May, we get an allocation from the state, telling us how much is available to allocate, and we must allocate it to people who have registered as homeowners. About the same time, we get a data file from the county, which lists all of the registered homestead owners, homeowners, and farmsteads. We only have, I believe, five farmsteads in Potts Grove School District, so that's not a, a big component of our, of our district. Within the district, then, we get to identify how much money we're going to provide an exclusion for, for the farmsteads, and basically, everything else is available to the homesteads. We take that pot of money that we have available, and we allocate it between all the qualifying homesteads in the district, and that's what generates this, this exclusion.
Wouldn't make sense to leave the money on the table.
So what this is saying is, is that $300, $299 is what the exclusion will, the reduction in taxes will be for each homeowner who has the homestead exclusion approved, correct?
Correct.
And you don't have to reapply to the homestead on an annual basis, you just have to do it once, correct?
That is correct, but there is the opportunity for new homeowners to register annually.
It was the exclusion word in there that was screwing me up. I was thinking you were excluding certain, like, you know, assessed value at X amount wasn't going to benefit from it, so that's why I was asking.
No, the, the exclusion is from the taxable amount. So, for example, if you had $120,000 assessed value for your home, 7,800 of that would not be taxed, would be excluded from the tax calculation. And that's what yields the $300.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Okay, 5.4, the Act 511 Taxes and Per Capita. Our recommendation is to prove the continuation of previously levied Act 511 taxes and a per capita tax, Section 679, School Code as presented.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments?
I know we've brought this up in the past, but how much money do we generate from the per capita tax?
I can look at it, it's not a big, big item. There are two per cap, two components of a per capita tax, there's the Section 679 and another, another act. Roughly around $30,000 each, so 60 in total, I believe, is the number.
Rick, I want to just point out that, and certainly up to the board, I've seen boards delete it because of the amount, but just be advised that if you don't assess it, the township can then pick up the other half from you, so.
Right, and I, and I was about to say that, because I remember when you told me that last year, because I want to eliminate the per capita tax and just fold it into our school taxes. I would prefer to do that, but it seems like a risky endeavor if, because, because we may not save anybody any money. In fact, we'd end up costing everybody more money if that happened.
Mr. Rubenowitz, I just pulled up the budget, the $30,000. The thirty thousand I was talking about was for Lower Pots Grove only, I apologize. It's a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the two components of the per capita tax.
Just two quick questions.
Two quick questions on that one then. With Mark, where you said that the township could fold in and take the remainder, can we do the same since Upper Pots Grove removed their tax?
I have to take a look at that, I don't know if it's out of my head, Al. You might be able to, but I know that from the, I apologize, I can look for you, the reverse perspective, if you give up your share, they can pick it up, they don't have to certainly, but they can, and so with to Rick's point, it might not be able to, I'll check.
It may be interesting to see if we could do the same.
Yeah, you have, you have to give notice, we're too late for this year, but we, I'll check to see if you could do it next year.
And then, obviously, on our expenses for next year, I'm guessing we're going to have a higher expense in upper, being the fact that we're the only ones taxing the per capita.
Since the bills go out and the postage and processing is shared by the two taxing jurisdictions, if they're not taxing and we're still taxing, we'll pay the full amount, yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, we'd like to recommend five five, our school district depositories.
I'd like to make a recommendation to be approved, five point five.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Five point six, tax collectors. The district would like to make the appointment of tax collectors for the seventeen eighteen school year.
I'd like to make a motion to be approved, five point six.
A motion in a second for five point six. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Five point seven, final budget transfers. We'd like to auth, we'd like to recommend.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, five seven and five eight.
Second.
Motion in a second to combine five seven and five eight. Any questions or comments on these two? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd also like to make a motion to approve, five point nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for five point nine.
Any questions or comments?
Mark, you want to stick around? Oh, is this Mark's?
Don't everybody rush to vote?
No, I do want to stick around, and I appreciate everything the board has done for us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to be, to approve, five point ten and five point eleven.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second for five, ten, and eleven. Any questions here, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to be approved, I'm sorry. I'd just bless you, so I'm ready to go.
That's all I know now, Patty.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, five point twelve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments?
Any reason we can't do this ourselves and save?
We had, for years, attempted to locate local businesses to sponsor, put a, put a banner on our baseball field, outfielder, whatever, and quite frankly, failed miserably over and over and over again. About eight years ago, Mr. D'Renzo identified Market Street Sports Group, who's, who was successful in doing this at a couple central Pennsylvania school districts, and actually had done some work with the Giant Center in Hershey to get sponsorships there. And they've done a great job for us, they, they limit the amount of distraction that we have to incur to showing the people around and, and kind of being nice, nice neighbors to them. And quite frankly, we've generated hundreds of thousands of dollars that we probably wouldn't have generated without them. Everybody's jobs are very busy here, and it'd be very difficult to take the time out of those busy jobs to, to recruit sponsors. So, while I would love to say that we're marketing experts here, we all have our specialization, and that's not it.
The only question I would have in regards to this one isn't that we could do it in-house. Have we ever tried other companies to try to see if we can get someone that could do a better job? Not saying they don't do a good job, but as we saw, our numbers do decrease each year, so I was wondering if we ever talked to other companies that you do the same service?
We have not, and I would like to introduce Mr. D'Renzo in that, in that conversation. It's my belief that they're the premier group in the area, but I'm, but I don't want to say that definitively, because I don't have that information. I know there are other, there are other organizations that have proposed putting advertising in school buses, on school buses, on lockers. We've tried to stay away from that and tried to keep it as a more high, high level sponsorship. But, you know, there are other options that we can, we can look at certainly. But I would suggest that maybe this fall, we, we have Mr. D'Renzo provide some input into that conversation.
Okay, all in favor of five twelve?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to school bus bids. The district recommends the award, the bids for purchase of three seventy-two-passioned school buses and one eighteen-passioned wheelchair as presented.
Motion in a second. Questions? Comments?
I just want to refresh everybody's memory that our trade-in allowances for alternates three to five are likely to go down. I'm guessing by twenty-seven hundred dollars.
On the one?
Yes.
Or on both?
No.
The oh five?
In total, this seventy-eight hundred represents everything, so in total, I expect it to go down approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Did someone, Dave, since the trade-in values changed so much, decreased so much, any idea what a junkyard would give us? Because honestly, the amount of metal on, on a bus, and, you know, and just the parts and stuff like that?
I raised that same question to Mr. Dickinson from CMD, so we're going to, we're going to get that information. But, I mean, these two, these two units that we're talking about are, for all intents and purposes, crap. I'm guessing the.
So I guess we'll find out.
I guess we'll find out, yeah. But, we will do some, some legwork on that as well.
Quick question, Dave. Does it pay us at all to decrease the rotation time? In other words, trade in buses earlier?
It'll cost us more.
Well, not if we get a higher trade-in value.
May.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question.
When I started here in two thousand and one, we were roughly looking at a twelve-year replacement cycle. We've extended that now to approximately fifteen years. That being said, the salvage value, if you will, trade-in value, has actually increased a bit over the years. When I started, it was a thousand dollars, period, for a twelve-year-old vehicle. Now, it's roughly four thousand dollars. So, I'm not sure that it would be for, for a year or two difference. The two thousand and two was six hundred dollars less than a two thousand and five. So, it's minimal, minimal deviation in, in trade value. I don't think there would be any justification to accelerate the replacement for two hundred dollars a year.
Wouldn't we be buying four buses a year instead of three, or five buses a year instead of three?
We'd have, we'd have to catch up.
So, that would be an extra hundred sixty thousand spent.
Till we were caught up.
Till we were caught up.
Right.
For like seven years, ten years. All time.
Okay, so we'll close that out. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, five point fourteen. Second.
Motion in a second for five point one four. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Five, five fifteen, Apple computer lease. Our recommendation is to authorize administration to enter into a new hardware lease for Apple for four years, for a total of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five thirty-three and ninety-six cents. The annual lease payment will be eighty-four thousand, one three three, and forty-nine cents.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments on this?
Can we request that the technology department bring us sometime in the fall, sometime next year, other options, not to say this isn't the best option, but just so we can see everything, especially with where things are at with Harrisburg? We don't know what's going to happen with funding, with property taxes, as Ashley said. This is such a large expense, I'm not saying it's not necessary, but, you know, just to see if there's other options in regards to how we lease versus purchase, you know, is Apple the, you know, right way to go? Could we, is anybody opposed to asking them to just share with us in the fall, the different options, just so we have a better understanding in case we need to start looking at that?
We discussed this at the last curriculum committee meeting. Somebody brought up the, I think it was Mr. Lappic brought up the, the possibility of looking into alternatives to, to Apple, for example. No action was taken. I know I myself spoke out against doing that, not because I'm not, because I'm specifically tied to Apple, but rather because I felt that, given that our teachers are adopting new language arts and math curriculum next year, that they're going to have their hands full, and that to try and burden them with, with learning a new computer platform at the same time, we would probably lose all the goodwill that we've gained in the past year. At least that was my concern in relation to that. And also, it would, my fear was that it would be a disruption to, to efforts to just, in general, improve student learning, because the students too are used to this platform. So while I'm not a big fan of Apple per se, change at this time caused me some concern. As for looking into other options, I'm not sure, besides changing the, to a different platform, what specifically are you asking for?
Well, you know, the different platforms, but also lease versus purchase, you know, perhaps this is the best route to go. Now, let me say, I agree with you, and I'm not thinking for change for next year for the reasons you stated. I think this motion, which I'll be voting yes for, will cover us for next year, but I'm just looking to see if we can get a report for the following year, following, you know, years to come, just so we have a understanding for future decisions.
Just two things, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe you can clarify if I'm incorrect, this is not part of the one-to-one. This is actually a different lease. Am I correct with that?
The primary one-to-one initiative is being replaced next year, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, so that'll be our next, that's our next cycle, yeah. This, I defer to Tony on what, what was incorporated in this lease.
Yeah, this is not part of the one-to-one, these are lab and library computers, these are classroom IMACs, these are all the IMAC machines that you see, the big monitor-type machines, not laptops or IMACs.
And Bill, just to clarify with the curriculum committee, Tony did, we actually did ask that question to him, and we actually had a pretty good discussion on that item, and he said he would gladly look it over, but the costs actually would probably outweigh the savings. So all four of us were actually, reason why we didn't bring it up. All four of us were against, stay afterwards. I think we should always be looking at, considering whether there are other alternatives, if we're going to renew the one-to-one next year, it would be a good time to consider, for example, whether a five-year lease is appropriate, and whether that might save us some dollars. I think that, I would hope that we would consider all possible options as part of the normal process of renewing those leases, because that's really when it's going to hit. So I'm in support of what you're saying, just, just in a somewhat cautious way, because I don't want to do anything to undermine our, undermine the reasoning for one-to-one, and, you know, and I wasn't originally for it, but, but I would not vote to remove it at this time, based on what I've seen so far. I think we have a long way to go, but, but, you know, that's going to be part of Dr. Ramage's responsibilities to really help us get more efficient, and I do think, though, anything we can do to make it less expensive is worth at least consideration. And I felt from the conversation we had with Tony, that, that the administration is on board with, with the idea, so.
So we are going to see some numbers at some point? What? You know, like, a difference, or a possibility of switching to something other than Apple? Mac? I'm just curious, is that in the works? I mean, is that, like, were you guys talking about doing that?
Yeah, looking at.
Looking, okay. Just, personally, I mean, Rick, I hear you with your concerns about switching platforms, but honestly, I mean, I'd have to venture that probably ninety-five percent of the kids and teachers too, or maybe more, don't have a Mac at home. So, they're going to be pretty well-versed on how to use, you know, a PC rather than a Mac. So, I don't see that it would be huge for the, especially for the students, because most of them probably grew up on something other than Mac. I know my kids certainly did. Although they did try to talk me into buying them a Mac, you know, and I just said, no. But, I would just like to see the numbers. I'm just curious. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree, by the way, and I don't think we should be looking at changing any time. You know, we're at the point where we need to approve this, and we've already gone down the path, but everybody knows that Apple costs three times more, equipment-wise, and, yeah, I don't think it's that difficult to go back to a Windows platform. I agree, not at the same time with what we have on TAT for this coming year. But, I think it's something we should look at maybe every cycle, and just, I'm, I'm not even, I don't agree with like an in-depth hour presentation, just kind of a slag, what's the cost difference between going with Chromebooks and, you know, an Android tablet versus iPads and MacBooks? I know there's a equipment cost difference, it's got to be pretty significant, but there's costs to change. So, I would be interested in knowing. I thought that, that going the app, I, I was in favor of the one-to-one, but I was never in favor of going the Apple route, and I thought that really got kind of fast-tracked with, with not a lot of questions answered very well, when we did it years back, so I'm in agreement with, with Bill. Just to understand what would be the implications if we did switch, not to get rid of the one-to-one, but to go to a different platform. All in favor? I mean, any more questions or comments on this one? So let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to be approved, six. Six for education actions, please.
Okay, motion in a second for six point one, which is the overnight trip for the Pennsylvania State Envirothon. Any questions or comments? which is the overnight trip for the Pennsylvania State Envirothon. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Can we vote on six point one first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Okay, action limits for number seven, seven point one. Gives us great pleasure tonight to recommend the appointment of our junior class member Savannah Lear to serve as a student board rep for a two-year term ending June nineteenth. Savannah, I know you're here tonight. I appreciate you coming, and congratulations, and we'll get a quick vote here, and you'll be official, and you'll be sitting up here with Mason on August, or actually September, I think it is. So, thank you.
Second. Any questions, comments? They're not all this exciting, so just be prepared, they can get pretty boring.
I missed the meeting, so I'm sorry, Savannah, I didn't get to meet you, so I'll be abstaining from this. That's the only reason.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great, and one abstention. Congrats. Welcome to the club.
Okay, committee items and reports. We have three minutes to approve. We have co-curricular, technology, and policy. Anybody interested in combining?
Yeah, these are all acceptance of the minutes, no report out, so, second. Motion to approve eight-one through eight-three, accepting the minutes. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Moving on to new business. Do we have any new business?
We do, we do have. We do have some new business. In, in your packets tonight, late this afternoon, you know, Mr. Carwell and Mr. Nestor have been working on a modification of our high school scope sequence for our asphalt resurfacing, and I'm gonna really let them explain, but some things, you know, surfaced in the last week, and we wanted to bring it to your attention, that we feel we need to get some things squared away regarding that bid. So I'm gonna, Mr. Carwell, if you would come up and just explain the, the, what you found out in the lower parking lot, obviously, and then regarding the safety and speed bumps, that'd be great.
Good evening, everyone. A week or so ago, we had our kickoff meeting, our kickoff meeting for the resurfacing of the macadam and improvements here at the high school. During that kickoff meeting, going around, putting schedules together and observing what the process would take place for scheduling out work, we had heavy rainstorms throughout the week. We noticed additional water intrusion and percolation in the south lot beyond the area where we originally seen the scope at. We believe if we don't do heavy excavation to move out the damaged substructure surface underneath the macadam, that when we go to mill it, it will cause damage that will revert us to having to do heavy excavation in the area that was identified. So with that, it was a recommendation to do the excavation upfront compared to waiting to see if the equipment tears up the macadam that's in place there. Number two, it was oversight on our bid specification on school lane. We're milling out two of speed bumps, but we only put in the specification to replace one. So we need to have the other one back that's close by the tennis court. It serves two purposes, sow traffic down and as well as water diversion across the route. The third request, several faculty and even some of my staff notice vehicles at excessive rate traveling through the, around the buildings, in a sense. So we would like to install two additional speed bumps that will protect the students and faculty for the perimeter roadway around the parking lots. With, with that recommendation, we believe that that will slow up the traffic that's going around the buildings, meaning that, as we looked at it, cars won't have a hundred feet of road to, smooth surface to accelerate excessively. Basically put six speed bumps around the perimeter of the building, forcing vehicle traffic to move at a slower pace. These additional requests is not to exceed ten thousand dollars. With that said, too, the vendor's bid is still the lowest bid, roughly fifty-seven thousand dollars, still lower than the, the next vendor who, who bided on the process.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How much is a speed bump? How much to, to add a speed bump? And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, the perimeter of the school's not the only place, at least my, my perception is that there's a problem. There's a long straight road between the tennis courts and North Charlotte Street that, I mean, because of our parking situation, people regularly have to park all the way down in the old shopping center parking lot where Planet Fitness is and walk to our fields. That's why I'm asking, 'cause every time I'm there for an event, there's people barreling through pedestrians trying to cross and walk down that road, so. If, if we're doing the work, and I don't even know if we can add speed bumps there, but I was just wondering, how much is a speed bump?
The, the cost for the three, because we're here on site right now, was roughly two thousand dollars for the three speed bumps.
So, six hundred?
Six hundred, exactly.
I think we have to talk to the township about that.
I was gonna say, our property stops right at where our entrance gate is at the end of the, the stadium. That's the end of our, our property there, for school lane.
Do they go down that? I'm trying to think of where we actually have them. We don't have any down that way, though, right?
So.
The last ones up by the tennis courts?
One by the tennis courts and one right at the entrance. Into our service road next to the stadium. Those are two. That's there presently, and the one, like I said, we will be, I'm requesting that we put back.
Okay.
Are speed bumps the only option? And by that, I'm comparing speed bumps to what, sometimes they're called speed humps. They're, they're a little bit longer?
Wider.
And wider. Yeah, well, thank you, wider. I, I must say, I prefer them to, to the bumps, but is there a price difference?
It is, and we actually have in the original bids, that we are putting some speed humps in. I did ask the vendor, though, to go in between a hump and a bump, if I can say, so the, I'll call it a hump-a-bump or bump-a-hump, it's really thirty inches wide. So it's, it's a little bit wider than the normal ones, like we had, we had one placed in rocks that was only twelve inches wide, so this one's thirty inches wide. It's right in between the two.
There seems to be a lot of questions. Am I missing something? So when you presented this to the Operations Committee and then, and then to the Board, it wasn't fully prepared, then?
No, I would say the document was fully prepared through the specs that we put in place out for bid, but in our pre-kickoff meeting, there were some issues that came about. Someone were just brought to the attention of the bid was out. We got a response back. So the safety ones were noted. Let me tell you this, one of my grounds persons were almost ran over by a vehicle with his mower, so we noticed then, we started looking at how vehicles move around, and.
But why, why wasn't all these things checked and seen before getting into this process? Why didn't we look at all these safety issues and kinda just step back and, and see what the needs were? I.
Well, I would say that, as the weather broke, we had an influx of more vehicles in our parking lots and traveling through with different events and so forth taking place, compared to the time when we started to prepare the documents for the bid spec, for the bid specs there. So, and then also, like I said, staff approached just recently on some safety concerns. We, we thought we addressed, let me say this to Mr. Park, if I can, we thought we addressed the safety with the speed humps in the speed table, so those were looked at as well. So we thought we addressed every issue, putting a speed bump at our loading dock where staff comes in and out and vendors drop off things. At the entrance to the new gymnasium, at the student, excuse me, the staff parking lot on the backside of the building where the ADA entrance is. So we thought we addressed every safety possibility there, but we realized after some more complaints and really looking again, that there are two other areas we believe we should put some speed bumps to slow traffic down even more. So they're there, but we believe we want to slow the travel even more.
It seems to me we just need to take a step back, make sure we look at the whole picture, send it back to the Operations Committee to review it and to, before we jump into this, 'cause we weren't fully set prior.
Let, let me just.
Just quick, I'll let the operations step, step in.
Step in. Two things here. When, when I, when they, when, when Dave and Jeff talked to me about this, the fir, the, the heavy rains were something that, that, that was something that just popped up for us. So we, that, that really wasn't anticipated, that piece. That was actually that site, that site visit and the walkthrough. So that, that was, that was, I guess, unanticipated, that particular point, you know, for us. The safety, when they came to me about the speed bumps, I'm like, for two thousand dollars, I really felt that that, we were gonna be safe and sorry, because I didn't want, I, my thought was that, that by doing that and having our campus a safer place and not having it a thoroughfare, you know, 'cause this is a thorough, this is a thoroughfare, there's no doubt about it. I, I just felt it, and that's why I really supported this coming tonight, because I, A, the ball's already rolling, and, and B, it was unforeseen with the rains, the torrential rains that we had. So I appreciated him at least taking, letting us know that and not waiting till it got milled up and having to stop and say, you know what, in July, we gotta meet again because of the issue. And of course, the safety factor that they brought to my attention, I felt that it needed to be brought here tonight, and my hope is that, you know, you know, the, the, the big part with the milling, that's sort of out of control, but the safety piece, at least we have control, we can say we did our due diligence around our school.
I hope it wasn't interpreted that. I was saying I disagreed with having a safe campus. My issue is that this wasn't fully looked at prior to going to the Operations Committee, prior to going to the Board. I am not against whatever we need to do for safety. I'm against this not being fully looked at in all aspects considered before moving forward. That is the point I'm making. I'm not gonna vote no to getting these things done, and if we have a timing issue, 'cause I guess Rick's right, we have to do it this summer, then we have a timing issue. But I'm still disturbed by the process that it went through, and we're just, well, we forgot this, we forgot that. Not that I'm against safety.
Okay. In terms of things that were forgotten, the only thing that was forgotten or a mistake was one speed bump worth seven hundred dollars. I'll pay it out of my frickin' pocket if it's that big a deal, all right? That's not an issue. The main cost that we're talking about here is eight thousand dollars that are allotted for the extra, extra work due to the pumping of the, of the asphalt down here in the south lot. That's eight thousand dollars out of the ten, and that was not, I don't wanna say this. When we get three, how many people do you have bid on this?
Three.
Three. When you have three people that do this for a living come out, I'm, I'm not surprised that they might find another area that is susceptible to pumping and raining and, and having problems that would need milling that we may not have identified in the bid documents. That's not a surprise. We got seven tenths of an inch, seven tenths of an inch of rain the other day. I mean, that's, that's a significant amount. Granted, it's not a twenty-five or a hundred-year storm, it's, it's a significant amount, and you're gonna see more problems when there's more rain. So that, I, in my opinion, it was a lucky break that in the right time, when we had time to make a decision, we found out there's maybe an extra area that we hadn't seen or noticed or took advantage of. But we've, we've been working on this since last fall, really, last fall. So it wasn't that we didn't take enough time, it's just some things are gonna be less obvious than others, 'cause remember, you know, there, there's the other things. In terms of the other two speed bumps, I'll tell you that the one over here that you're talking about, between the one hundred ring and the science ring, I'm okay with that. The happiest day of my life was when you took out the speed bump over here on the corner. I don't want that one back, but, but that's, that's as far as that goes. Those are my recommendations. I think, I think that we, now that the eight thousand dollars is not based on a specific area, is it, or is it?
Well, yes, we did identify an area that we specked out the square foot overall for in the south lot. And then the, from that, we believe that, as you said, that's what we can see, but once the milling starts, there could be other issues. But we believe where we looked at last week, that we identified the weakest part of the substructure.
Where in, where in the south lot is it?
So it's farther up from where we are already gonna do excavation for the drainage. It's about ten feet, twenty feet up farther along the lower of the lot towards all the drainage there. So water penetrated even farther than what we initially specked out in the, in the bid.
Yeah. One of the issues on the, on the, one of the issues is causing problems down there in the south lot is the fact that water's not free to drain into the basin. There's essentially a grass turf curb at the end of it, so it holds water against the pavement instead of letting it run off. Well, that's not a big problem in the summer and the spring. It's a big, it's more of a problem in the wintertime when it's, when it's all ice, because ice is the enemy of pavement and structures in general. So when, when the melt-off or runoff freezes overnight and you start having problems, and again, we don't have great soil here, it's all shale, it holds water, and it's just really, really hard for pavements. So I, that makes sense to me. It's farther up than, than, we did, it is farther up than we, we had thought. So that's not a big surprise. So I stand by, you know, what we did in terms of the committee and the work that, that you did putting this together, and I think that was good. And like I said, the only thing I think you went wrong on was the, the rear southwest side of the high school, but other than that, I think we're in good shape. Does anybody else have any questions?
I did have one comment, 'cause I wanna go back to what Matt said. For those of us that use the fields a lot, he's a hundred percent correct, as in it becomes like a runway between the service road for the tennis court football field and the baseball field. I would love to see a hump, bump, whatever you wanna call it, at the, towards the end of the baseball field, 'cause that's where the kids are constantly crossing and the cars are flying down that road. And that's where the stretch, where everybody feels, okay, I can gun it now. So I would love, and that's on our property, so.
I would love if, if.
If allowed to put one there.
So why don't we make a motion to accept this specification with an additional speed bump hump to be placed as far down that road as we can do it without having to go through additional approvals? And, and I make that motion, though I hate speed bumps, but, but they're here for a reason, and the safety of our students and, and everybody who uses our facilities is paramount, so that's my motion. Accept the recommendation with an extra.
Motion and a second. Amended. Questions, comments?
Comment. First of all, what you brought up with all those cars, the cars that park there, all, all the fans. Couple of years ago, Gary had that where you could not park there. We need to look into that again, because you'll have cars parked on one side and parked on the other, either which way, or they're going this way or that way, and it becomes a hazard for anybody that has to walk. So I don't know if we could rent the space up, you know, where the Planet Fitness, I think it is, but that's the biggest hazard, and I don't wanna get to the point where we should've done it and been, and enforced something for someone to get hurt, because it's really, really dangerous, really dangerous there, so we need to be proactive with that.
I know that's not, that's not part of this, but I, I do agree, right? I mean, you park, park up the sides, on both sides, then it forces people to have to walk in the street because the hill starts to go up after, so. Okay. All right, so let's, let's move through and, and take this vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Mr. Carwell and Mr. Nestor. Thanks, Mr. Carwell and Mr. Nestor. On behalf of the athletic department and the, and the school district, I'd like to take this time to announce the Allstate Foundation Helping Hands in the community for donating a thousand dollars to the athletic department on behalf of the community service of Mr. Albert Leach.
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand. Where's the other two? Where, how come I have one? Okay. Okay, we got, all right, I just, we'll do, we'll do it again next time we get the other thousand. For more than sixty years, Allstate Foundation has been bringing out, you know, good, good in millions of lives throughout the community, involvement in service to our communities. We are proud to include Pots Grove Athletic Department as a partner for providing innovative and lasting solutions to enhance your community, you know, well-being and prosperity. So, on behalf of the athletic department, I'd like to thank Mr. Leach for giving his time to our district and being a positive force of change throughout the community and his service. So, congratulations, thank you, Mr. Leach.
I have one thing, and I'm a little reticent to bring it up, but I've decided I should, and that is, we have a minor kerfuffle with one of our townships over an invoice, and there have been some emails traded. It's a three hundred dollar invoice, and the township is Upper Pots Grove. And without getting into, and Al, you sent an email out on it, and you know all about it. I think that there's enough justification for both parties to feel that they're right. You know, we sent an invoice for the use of, of our facilities, particularly the use of an exterior bathroom and the overtime for custodial services that was provided on behalf of the township. The amount was three hundred dollars. The township felt that they didn't ask for those additional services, and they got upset about the invoice. We have a longstanding positive relationship with Upper Pots Grove Township. I personally do not think three hundred dollars is worth putting the relationship we have with the township at risk. I think that, that there's, you know, that, that when you have a situation, a dispute, disagreement, the most important thing is to learn from the experience. I think that there's, that we know enough that we could learn from the experience that we wouldn't have the misunderstanding that occurred on a go-forward basis. So I would like to move that we forgive the three hundred dollar invoice to Upper Pots Grove Township in question this one time, and in the future, we will make sure that it's crystal clear before the event, that, that if there are charges, the approximation of what those charges will be and what they're for, so that there's no future misunderstanding. I feel strongly, the township provides us with police services in addition to our, the one that we pay for at the school. They're there for us every morning and afternoon to assist with security, as well as make sure that things run smoothly. It's, it's too small an amount to, to cause hard feelings. And hard feelings between you and, between the district and the township have a way of costing us a lot more than three hundred dollars when it comes time to getting permits. So for all those reasons, I make this motion and hope that somebody will support me with a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions?
I, it did come to my attention a while back, and I brought it up to the attention at the athletic committee meeting, but we, the township also is gracious enough to let us use that one field right across from the middle school. They maintain it, I mean, we put lime on it, but they maintain it. So I think that we all need to sit down and lay it out, like you said, but, you know, at least they let us use that, and we don't want them to come back and say, well, now we're gonna charge you for using our field, because again, it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids. So I agree with you, but I think we need to sit down and hash this out before it gets this far next year.
I'll just say, you know, fine if it was a misunderstanding, three hundred, three hundred dollars is the same either way, in my opinion. We can afford it and so can they. They asked to use a bathroom. If you leave a small public bathroom open for a couple hundred people for an entire warm day without anybody attending to it, it gets pretty unusable pretty quick. I mean, it is, it is, it's a bathroom that the entrance to is from the outside of the school, okay? There's toilet paper, paper towels, soap, things like that that can get used up. If the district saw fit to have somebody there to attend to that so that the bathroom didn't get trashed, I don't think that's the wrong thing, and I, but I also think that we could be more clear in describing the charges. I do facilities requests constantly through the school district. We rent a porta-pot so that we don't have to do that, okay? And they're nice enough to accommodate that and let us put it on the property. There's a lot of different ways to look at it, but I don't know. It's three hundred bucks, I'm not particularly comfortable with being shamed and giving it over. You know, my organization's responsible for their, their stuff, and I would expect everybody's is. That said, maybe we can do better. I don't think we wanna get in a situation where every time somebody puts in a request, we have to give them a detailed rundown of what the charges are gonna be either. So, I mean, in good faith, I'm okay with it, but this is, you know, to me, the same thing, every time somebody misunderstands, we give away money, whether it's tax relief or whatever, so. I don't think it's as cut and dry, maybe, as you're making it out to be, but I don't want our relationship to be bad either.
Well, I don't think it's cut and dry either, just to be clear, and I don't feel shamed either, I just feel like the relationship is more important.
There was a lot of mudslinging that went on, right? I mean, we got accused of not taking care of the field, it turned into a big thing, I don't, you know, over three hundred bucks, I just, maybe, maybe we both have enough evidence to be right, but we probably both have enough to be wrong too. Over three hundred dollars.
Well, over, so over three hundred dollars, I wanna be the mature adult and just put it to bed. So, you know, I'm with you, I hear you, I see your point, but that's the reason I made the motion. Of course, the board may choose to vote it down, but that is my rationale anyway.
Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I had one new comment. As we already said, the athletic booster club, we don't sleep, so we're already starting on our fall program, and actually, I'm gonna point this out so you can see it here, this is what we're looking for. The fall program happens to be probably our largest fundraising opportunity that we have, where we ask for the companies to actually put in an advertisement into the fall program. The fall program probably raises the school booster club, which of course donates back to the school, probably about twenty-five hundred dollars in regards, and that actually is, like I said, the largest of all of our possible fundraising groups. So we're always asking for new advertisements, we wanna make it as big as possible, we trying to work, we already started on this year's fall cover and this year's fall program, and like I said, we already started on the golf, the golf team for our sponsorships for that. So, I'm out there, I wish Bill was here, because I wanted to plug him for his Paradise Booster, Paradise Donuts, all right? Paradise Donuts, get a program.
Okay, any public comment on non-agenda items before we close up? Great. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting, go into exec session. Thanks.